Good morning everyone. We certainly appreciate that we are here. We're thankful and grateful to have this opportunity to see another day. To do something good, to be a living and not a thing. So we're truly thankful for this space. And we're truly thankful to be amongst each other. At this time, I am calling the meeting to order. And I would like to also call on C. Page. Be with me as we make our pitch. Stand or remain standing. And Councilman Bailey will lead us. Mayor Johnson, blessings. Happy Fourth of July to you all. I thought it might be appropriate, this coming up on a fourth of July, to make our favorite song, "God Bless America", which you're welcome to join and sing with me. Although somebody may want to step away from the microphone. May we be to our counsel, the Phoenix City, as we sing "God Bless America"? God bless America. Land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the prairies to the oceans wide and full. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home. Awesome. Thank you, thank you. Then we join the question. Place your flag please. Teacher, student, great.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, who hath made our safe and merry and who is the Republic of which sustains, one nation under God. Give the liberal liberty of us tomorrow.
Thank you all so very much. I'm certainly appreciating the one thing in you. All the time, great service. So with that, leading along at this time, I'd like to call on our HR director, as I said, the management, for the presentation of one of the highly most important things that we can do to show appreciation and say thank you sincerely. Just be able to acknowledge some of our workers, or one of our workers, and they all had work first. So, listen, huh? This is just thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. As the mayor said, this is the highlight for us. We do this once a month to recognize our five-year incremental service annuations. We only have one for the month of July, so with our engineering public work, we have Mr. Ricky Leonard with five years of service. So, Mr. Leonard, good.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome to say a few words if you'd like to. Tonight, we do appreciate your service and how much you do for the city.
I would want to say, I used to go out with my best friend. Can you remember, very bad, he wanted to shoot that off the side and pretty much find somewhere else. But, well, and, uh, more than you ever helped me get here, like, back. But, I appreciate that.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much. We appreciate the gratefulness that you've shown. And I would challenge you to show other people how to be grateful. We need that more than we ever have. So, thank you so much. And yesterday, I did make the copy that we want to encourage you to try to do with these twenty more. Hey, sun it up, you can do it.
Congratulations.
Thank you so very much. We appreciate you, awesome. Proceeding on at this time, Council. Under the city court, I'd like to call for motion for the approval of regular scheduled meeting minutes. But at this time, I'd like to call for motion for the June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, where the session may have motion.
How was that delivered, Mayor?
Alright, motion, Councilman Day, second, Councilman Carter. We have the motion, and we have the second. At this time, I'd like to call for both, Mrs. Davis.
Councilman Day.
Yes.
Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Councilman Bailey.
Thank you.
Councilman Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. And also proceeding under the regular scheduled meeting minutes, at this time, Council, I'd like to call for motion for the approval of the June eighteenth council meeting. We may have a motion, please.
What's the group rule?
Alright, we have the motion, Councilman Gordon, we may have a second.
Day.
Second, Councilman Day. We have the motion, and we have the second. Mrs. Davis.
Councilman Day.
Yes.
Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Councilman Bailey.
Thank you.
Councilman Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Thank you. At this time, Council, I'd like to ask if any Council have any unfinished business that they would like to discuss? If not, we will proceed on on our resolutions, beginning with our administration department. It says we have a resolution in reference to authorize and direct the legal council representing the city of Penning City, Mayor and City Manager, to execute consent agreement in order between the city of Penning City and Ricky L. Patterson, owner of eighteen oh one Noe Road, Penning City, Alabama. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas, in accordance with Penning City Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one oh five, the city of Penning City instigated a lawsuit against Ricky L. Patterson and the Circuit Court of Roswell County, Alabama, without city of Penning City versus Ricky L. Patterson, case number fifty-seven H two B dash twenty twenty-four dash nine zero zero one four three, and sought to have real property owned by Patterson located at eighteen oh one Noe Road, Penning City, Alabama, declared a couple of incidents. And whereas, the defendant Ricky L. Patterson has agreed to a consent agreement and order restricting the use of eighteen oh one Noe Road to legal activities properly approved and permitted by the city of Penning City. Now therefore, be resolved by the city council of the city of Penning City, Alabama, as follows. Number one, that the terms of the consent agreement and order have been presented to the legal council and reviewed, and the city council is in favor of the consent agreement and order. Number two, that the city council does further authorize and direct the council representing the city of Penning City in this matter, the mayor and the city manager to execute the proposed consent agreement and order on behalf of the city, passed proof and adopted this second day of July, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Davis, for that reading of the resolution. This council, we have all heard. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion. Do you may have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alright, we have the motion, Councilman Day, we have the second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. Comments or discussion, Council?
If anything, Mayor, I'm assuming that he understands the terms of this and knows what he tends can't do, whereas he winds up doing something that we say he shouldn't be doing. He can't give an excuse about that one on the list. He's been planning to put it to him what, why we're doing this since then.
Okay. Don't surprise us.
That's what I'm saying, right? I don't know surprise if it's on the other end, but, you know, it's good that it worked out this way. And I hope to say it that way.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any other comments or discussion? If not, at this time, I'd like to call for both, Mrs. Davis.
Councilman Day.
Yes.
Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Councilman Bailey.
Yes.
Councilman Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Also proceeding on the administration, there's a resolution in reference to granting the tax abatement to Alfred Foods. Mrs. Davis.
This resolution is needed this two day of July, twenty twenty-four, by the city of Penning City, Alabama, to grant a tax abatement to all working foods. And whereas, the company has announced a new entry. You can call it ours major relation to their existing facility located within the jurisdiction of the Renting Authority. And whereas, pursuant to the tax incentive performed after nineteen ninety-two, the company has requested from the Renting Authority in the payment of as all state and the local non-educational property taxes on manufacturing and non-manufacturing equipment, as all construction of religious and satiety taxes, except those local construction of religious and satiety taxes related for educational purposes of their capital hundred and is for education and work, all rich in recording taxes. And whereas, the company has requested that the abatement state and the local non-educational property taxes be extended for a period of five years in accordance with the act. And whereas, the Renting Authority has considered or requested of the company and the completed applications filed with the Renting Authority by the company in connection with the request. And whereas, the Renting Authority saw the information contained in the company's application to be sufficient to accommodate the Renting Authority to make a reasonable cost and an analysis of the cost project and determine the economic benefits to the community. And whereas, the construction of the project will involve capital investment of two million forty thousand dollars. And whereas, the company is duly qualified to do business in the state of Alabama and has powers to generate to and to perform and interpret agreements and covenants on to our key to gain the tax abatement agreement. And whereas, the Renting Authority represents and warrants to the company that its power under that constitution and laws of state of Alabama to carry out different conditions of tax abatement agreement. Now, therefore, be resolved by the Renting Authority as follows. Section one, approval is hereby given to the application of the company and abatement is hereby granted of as all state and the local non-educational property taxes on manufacturing and non-manufacturing equipment, as all construction of religious and satiety taxes, except those local construction of religious and satiety taxes related for educational purposes of their capital hundred and is for education and work, all rich in recording taxes. And as the same mayor calls to the fullest extent limited by the act, the period of abatement for the non-educational property taxes shall extend for a period of five years, we measure that as provided in section four of the law design that you want to support in the act. Section two, the government body of the Renting Authority offers to enter into the abatement agreement for the company to provide for the abatement granted in section one. Section three, as certified by the company this resolution, the application of the abatement agreement shall be forwarded to the company to deliver to the appropriate local tax authorities and to the Alabama Department of the renter in accordance with the act. Section four, the government body of the Renting Authority offers to take in all actions necessary for the several to accomplish the purposes of the authority in this resolution. Passed, approved and adopted this two day of July. Passed, approved and adopted this two day of July, twenty twenty-four.
Council, we heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. We have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Alright, we have the motion, Councilman Day, and we have the second. Second, Councilman Gordon. Any comments or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I watched the addition to the addition to this copy. There are presenting for twenty-five, twenty-seven jobs, but they have the timeframe on there. Why didn't you get the part of Penny? Without the timeframe on employees titled individual title?
Yes, sir, Mr. Davis. Good morning, guys. And so, the way that we structure this is they fill out the application based on good faith estimates. And so, right now, we base out their employment typically over a three-year period. But in this case specifically, this employment will happen almost instantaneously. So, once this, what they're doing right now, they're simply just installing new automated equipment to make their processes better. And so, those employees can be hired pretty rapidly. So as soon as the equipment's installed, they can get the training. And if they're in there, these employees will be there within the first year. So, almost as soon as this equipment's actually installed, they'll be employed, trained, and ready to do. So, this will be twenty-four years in the matter of months.
Okay, well, once they get that new equipment in there, that not going to eliminate the job that down there for the president employee.
You understand, I'm sorry.
Well, once you get the new equipment installed, that not going to eliminate the job for the other employees.
Well, automation is certainly something we're seeing all over the place. And so, these jobs specifically will be hired at a higher wage than some of the existing jobs that they do have. And so, as far as eliminating existing jobs, I'm not sure of that. I think this is simply adding a new line that we automate that they can have. New employees at a higher wage. They're still.
Mayor, I'm afraid when the president's unemployed, they're all.
The employer will have to speak a little more to that. I don't know, but I anticipate this being more of a new line, instead of a regular old one.
Alright.
But at the same time, Mr. Davis, your question is real, because if people continue to not want to work, pass drug tests, these nothing's had no choice but to go to the public. So that is, that is the future of our effort because, just like the shortage we have is, you know, to go out. You're a big area, what we do with public safety, or not, it's the same thing. They have to do within the industry.
Mr.? It's an unfortunate reality in America. But I will say, at least with new automation, new training, it does come with higher wages, more skilled employees typically, right? And so, those skilled employees should pay the higher wages. So, if there is a reduction, these new employees will receive more wages than the existing employees we're going to receive for a makeable line. But these are, it is here, automation, so, honestly.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
One question, please. Thank you, Sean. Good job. And we didn't even have to tell you eat your wings.
I did, I did.
Any other comments or discussion, questions? If not, Council, at this time, I'd like to call for both, Mrs. Davis.
Councilman Day.
Yes.
Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Councilman Bailey.
Yes.
Councilman Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Proceeding on, Council on the Building Department. We have a public hearing and approval of two resolutions in reference to the fixing of costs incurred by City of Penning City for the removal of substandard structures and the establishment of special assessment on the properties located at two twenty-eight Eleventh Avenue, thirteen hundred twenty-first Street. At this time, I would like to prepare this at the public hearing. And if there's anyone that would like to step forward and address Council in reference to this fixing of costs and the removal of substandard structures, now is the time to do so. If there's anyone that would like to step forward. It says, opening up a public hearing. Okay? Since no one has stepped forward, I am preparing this public hearing close. And at this time, I'd like to call on that person for the reading of the master resolution. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas, the city council of the city of Penning City, Alabama, was requested by building officials of the city to authorize the demolition and removal of substandard structures at the following locations in Penning City. Number one, two twenty-eight Eleventh Avenue. Number two, thirteen hundred twenty-first Streets. Whereas, the city council on the second day of April, twenty twenty-four, by resolution number twenty twenty-four dash sixty-four and resolution number twenty twenty-four dash sixty-seven, approved the apparent law bid to demolish and or remove said substandard structures located on each property listed above. And whereas, the city has given notice by certified and registered mail to the person or persons last assessed for applicable taxes for each property, and a notice has been published in the Citizen of East Alabama, a local newspaper of general circulation, at least fifteen days before this final hearing for the fixing of costs for each property. And whereas, after giving all interested parties an opportunity at this public hearing to address Council on this second day of July, twenty twenty-four, on the issue of the fixing of costs in these cases, the city council believes the fixing of costs have been determined and that they should be assessed against the substandard structures as named above and reported in the probate office to protect the interest of the city. Now therefore, be resolved by the city council of the city of Penning City, Alabama, as follows. Number one, that the final costs and the removal of the substandard structures at the following locations are as follows. A, two twenty-eight Eleventh Avenue, four thousand eight hundred dollars. B, thirteen hundred twenty-first Streets, seventeen thousand dollars. Number two, that the city court filed a certified copy of each resolution with a probate judge of Roswell County, Alabama, to establish a special assessment that shall constitute a lien on Penning City, Alabama, upon each property that shall be collected through the Revenue Commissioner's Office for Roswell County, Alabama. Three, that the legal description for each property is listed on each individual resolution where that particular property has taken from the records of the Revenue Commissioner's Office of Roswell County, P.O. Box six six nine, Penning City, Alabama. Number four, that the property owners listed below for each property are as shown on the tax records of Roswell County, Alabama. Number one, two twenty-eight Eleventh Avenue, Alabama, is accommodation for you, LLC. Twenty eighteen cent tax sale. Five sixteen Pelston Streets, Mobile, Alabama, thirty-six six one seven. Number two, thirteen hundred twenty-first Streets, Dennis Mason Carter, P.O. Box one two five thirty, Club Shore, three one number zero two. Passed proof and adopted this second day of July, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council, we have heard the reading of the master resolution. At this time, if we can, state our motion for both properties, I would like to ask for a motion for the fixing of costs and the removal of substandard structure according to the resolution that we just read. Do you have a motion, please?
I would want to, at this time, Mayor.
I have a motion. Councilman Day, we have a second. Second, Councilman Gordon. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Davis.
Councilman Day.
Yes.
Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Councilman Bailey.
Yes.
Councilman Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on now, the police department. We have a resolution in reference to authorize and direct the mayor, city manager, and chief of police to sign an agreement with Alabama Power Company for a license plate reader, also known as a LVR camera systems for the police department. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas, the city of Penning City desires to enter into an agreement with Alabama Power Company for a license plate reader, LVR camera system for the police department. And whereas, the city council has reviewed said agreement submitted by Alabama Power Company for a monthly service amount of two thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars and twenty-four cents under a twenty-four month service agreement. And whereas, the city council calls the agreement to be a necessity for the day-to-day operations of city business. Now therefore, be resolved that the city council of the city of Penning City, Alabama, does hereby authorize and directs the mayor, city manager, and chief of police to sign an agreement with Alabama Power Company for an LVR camera system for the police department. Passed proof and adopted this second day of July, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, thank you again, Mrs. Davis. Council, we have all heard the resolution. At this time, we have a motion, please.
Motion to approve it.
Alright, we have a motion from Councilwoman Carter, we have a second.
Sir.
Second, Councilman Day. Any comments or discussion?
Mayor, just after, I think it's twenty-four month period, what happens after that? The structures will still be there, but do we renew the terms of the contract with Alabama Power? How would that proceed after the initial?
So there's an additional twenty-four months renewal at the same cost. So it actually turned into a four-year deal after that date. But the price increase, not for that, but it's an automatic renewal for twenty-four months.
Let me ask you, so at that time, if we see that some of the cameras have to be moved, is that the time to do it? Or can we do it within the contract terms?
We can move them.
At any time?
The locations are not part of the contract. It's just the number of cameras.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Any other comments or discussion, questions? Okay. Not like to call for both, Mrs. Davis.
Councilman Day.
Yes.
Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Councilman Bailey.
Yes.
Councilman Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, Council on the Police Department. There's a resolution in reference to authorize and direct the mayor, city manager, and chief of police to sign and enter into a mutual aid agreement with the city of Auburn, Alabama, for professional services utilized in both the police departments. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas, the city of Penning City, Alabama, and the city of Auburn, Alabama, desire to enter into a contract with the city of Auburn for professional services utilized in the Penning City Police Department. And whereas, it would be a benefit to the city of Auburn and the city of Penning City to enter into a contract for professional services and have a mutual aid agreement between the Penning City Police Department and the Auburn Division of Police. Now therefore, be resolved by the city council of the city of Penning City, Alabama, that the mayor and city manager as authorizing officials[1475.54] and George Stoudinger as chief of police are hereby authorized and directed to sign the necessary documents for the above referenced MOU and professional services contract with the city of Auburn. Passed proof and adopted the second day of July twenty twenty four.
Okay, thank you again. Council, we've heard a resolution at staff, I'd like to ask the council for a motion, please. We have a motion to approve. All right, we have a motion, Councilman Day, may I have a second?
Sir.
Second, Councilman Moore. Councilor Day, any comments on this discussion?
Uh, yes, sir. Mayor, we've been doing this for a number of years, I know that for a fact. Um, but I want to be aware that this is something that we've been doing for a number of years. But I do want to ask, this was once we sent our office over there. They got there with the other officer in that city, you know, in Auburn.
That's correct, Auburn officer is under the supervision of Auburn the police department, Auburn Department of Public Safety.
Okay, I did, you know, I also care for one of those over there.
Great, Mr. Gray, yes.
I just want to be aware that we've been doing it so we'll be able to assist you in anything. It's a long way out there, this contract didn't end down for a number of years.
Right. So several years, you'd say.
Thank you, sir.
How many other cities, city people over there besides Penning City?
Uh, there's several, they're looking for additional cities now to fill the needs that they have for Auburn, so it's, it's quite a number of areas, several cities around.
Like you said, yes, I do, but I think everybody needs to understand, you know, our police department's not full of staff.
Right.
But we don't see any more older than that who work, we can afford. For safety reasons here, I'm the city first.
That's correct.
Send no, I love people who jump the gun and think we promised five officers they're gonna get five reasons, six reasons, so.
From the city.
By the way, that's one word, right. I just want everybody to be assured to feel safe about that. Uh, and I'm sure every, every city has, not just Penning City, but, uh, they certainly need the help over there. I know that our police department is gonna watch out for us here first, so I just want to make sure everybody was aware of that. So that's a good, that was a good statement, it made it, it did make it, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mrs. Davis. Any other comments, questions, or discussions? If not, call for vote, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes.
Thank you.
Also on the police department, there's a resolution in reference that you plan to set a high intensity surplus to be disposed of at landfill destroyed at Auburn University and Centaurian Facility or relinquished to property room incorporated. To be sold at auction. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas, the police department of the city of Penning City has several items which are no longer needed for public or municipal purposes. And whereas, section eleven dash forty-three dash fifty-six of the Alabama Code nineteen seventy-five as amended authorizes for the municipal governing body to dispose of unneeded personal property. Now therefore, we resolve by the city council of the city of Penning City, Alabama, that the attached list of described property and evidence is hereby declared surplus to be disposed of at the landfill destroyed at the Auburn University and Centaurian Facility or relinquished to property room incorporated to be sold at auction. Passed proof and adopted the second day of July twenty twenty four.
Okay, council, we've all heard a resolution from the agreement clerk. It's time for an actual motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion, Councilwoman Carter, and this is second, Mrs. Davis? We have a motion in the council, second, now that, Mrs. Davis?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any comments on this discussion? Questions?
Yeah, one question, the stuff that's gonna be sold at auction. Is that the stuff that's been stolen, or just stuff that recovered and necessarily not stolen, but maybe used in a crime? Because we just wanted people to buy that stuff. How does it get cleared up where it later on? They're not accused of having something that.
Right.
They'll do crap, so.
These particular items here are all found in property cases and we're going to lose that property for the necessary twenty days for somebody to come forward to claim them. All these cars and the test fire and the shell cases have been entered from the night of that release, which will link down if they're used in any type of crime. So that's our argument.
Right. All right, well, that answers that. I did have somebody yesterday when I told them, you know, about something like this, and how that works, so I'm really thinking of. So I think that that answers that question. Okay, thanks so much, thank you, Mrs. Davis.
Any other comments, discussions, questions? Not, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, council on the utilities department. We have a resolution in reference to authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to sign a change order number one and two. With P L Moon and Company Incorporated for the wastewater treatment plant, primary clarifiers, upgrade, improvements project. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas, according to twenty twenty-four, that's zero six, awarded the contract for wastewater treatment plant, W W T P, primary clarifiers, upgrade, and improvements project to P L Moon and Company Incorporated for a contract price of one million eight hundred ninety-seven thousand five hundred dollars. And whereas, the city of Penning City, Alabama, has the majority of the piping and diffusers for the second half of a new aeration basin and desires to have these installed to allow the second half of the new aeration basin to be put in service earlier than planned. And whereas, the city of Penning City requested a change order for installation of said piping and diffusers, and P L Moon and Company E has submitted change orders number one and number two, which the utilities department wishes to include in the project. And whereas, said change order would result in a contract price adjustment of additional ninety-two thousand one hundred and sixty dollars with an additional sixty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars. Thus increases the total project cost to two million fifty-two, fifty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and is more specifically described as follows. Change order number one. Item aeration basin, diffuse aeration, piping and spray water piping installation. Cost ninety-two thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. Change order number two. Install new conduit and wire to sideline at the W W T P. The contractor will provide excavation and backfill for the new conduit and your cost to the owner. Additional cost sixty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars, which brings it to a total cost of one hundred fifty-five thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars. Now therefore, we resolve that the city council of the city of Penning City, Alabama, does hereby authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to sign change order number one for the W W T P primary clarifiers, upgrade, and improvements project. Passed proof and adopted the second day of July twenty twenty four.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Davis, for agreeing of that resolution which council we've offered. It's time for an access, council for a motion, please, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion, Councilman Day, may I have a second?
Sir.
Second, Councilman Moore. Comments, discussions, or questions?
Yes, uh, Mayor, I do realize that this is a ongoing project down in this, uh, frequent plant, and, uh, this stuff they must do, and they need to do. Um, but we really want to not let our citizens let them know that why we, the change order took place, had, uh, had a, uh, item. We want citizens to understand that, we must do this, or when you got in there, they find out where to be.
Mayor, please, take your orders, uh, first one. This, you know, aeration basin piping and diffusers that will get the second half of our new aeration basin online. We had the piping, our little basements are the piping and the diffusers. Already was done. And, uh, this will allow us to get that second half online. And we wanted to get this project to clarify, so we get that done. The second change order is, uh, to have the safety and security plug to get, uh, new kind of wiring to the lights, uh, rear of the plant.
I want to think, uh, that once they got in there and it, so it needed that, invest time to do it right, and then don't have to, which, you're not gonna do that one.
Yes, a lot of contractors already have their own, uh, project, you don't have to pay a work, come back to them, all of us to, to do these projects.
Good to hear, and so, be you, boy?
Yes, sir, be you.
All right, thank you, council. Any other comments, questions, or discussions before we call for vote? Not, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, council on the ordinance, this is the first reading. It's an ordinance to amend the code of ordinance on the city of Penning City, Alabama. Chapter six, related to alcoholic beverages, section six point six oh. Be hours of business for alcoholic beverages licenses, sale of alcoholic beverages to minors, et cetera. Again, council, this is the first reading. It's time for all round of votes. Mrs. Davis?
Yes, sir.
In accordance to the Code of Ordinances of the city of Penning City, Alabama, chapter six, related to alcoholic beverages, section six to sixty hours of business for alcoholic beverage licenses, sale of alcoholic beverages to minors, et cetera. Be agreed by the city council of the city of Penning City, Alabama, for the Code of Ordinances of the city of Penning City, Alabama, chapter six, related to alcoholic beverages, section six point six zero. Hours of business of alcoholic beverage licenses, sale of alcoholic beverages to minors, et cetera, having been amended previously for ordinance two thousand eleven to twenty-two, and now hereby amended to read as follows. Section six to sixty hours of business for alcoholic beverage licenses, sale of alcoholic beverages to minors, et cetera. Monday through Saturday. It shall be non-hogel for any person to buy, give away, sell, or serve for consumption on off-presses for the drink or use submitted alcohol beverages in any cafe, lunchroom, restaurant, hotel dining room, or other public place between the hours two A M and six A M this time. With the exception on New Year's Day, lessons each will be allowed to serve alcohol beverages and to permit persons to drink or consume alcohol beverages until before eight this time. Sunday. It shall be non-hogel for any person to buy, give away, sell, or serve for consumption on off-presses for the drink or use submitted alcohol beverages in any cafe, lunchroom, restaurant, hotel dining room, or other public place between the hours two A M and one. Zero P M. Off-presses sales and distribution of alcohol beverages are limited in any cafe, lunchroom, restaurant, and hotel dining room between one P M and eleven P M, which shall not be allowed to consume until six A M on Monday. Off-presses sales and distribution of alcohol beverages are limited after one P M. Off-presses sales are not allowed by any agency not defined, section six to seventy-nine. It shall be non-hogel for any person to buy, give away, sell, or serve for consumption on off-presses and any alcohol beverages to minors. All businesses licensed for off-presses consumption of alcohol beverages shall close on alcohol sales or off-presses consumption is prohibited for such action of suspension. All businesses licensed for off-presses consumption of alcohol beverages that are not defined, section six to seventy-nine, shall close on alcohol sales or off-presses consumption is prohibited for such action of suspension. Businesses licensed for off-presses consumption of alcohol beverages that are not defined, section six to seventy-nine, for off-presses consumption of alcohol beverages shall close on Sunday between two A M and six A M. A conviction for violation of suspension of a license fee of licensed alcohol beverages established in the order of these such license fees or working in such licenses established to constitute on the under location of the license of alcohol beverages at the location where the violation occurred. Thank you.
Okay, council, we've heard the first reading. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion to place on first reading. May I have a motion?
Motion to place on first reading.
All right, that's a motion by Councilman Day, and that's a second by Councilwoman Carter. You have that, Mrs. Davis?
Yes, sir.
All right, at this time, I'd like to call for a vote. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, council, this is also a first reading. It's an ordinance, it's an ordinance to D N X zero point nine five plus minus eight, a tract of land minus six point eight. Township eighteen north, ranch thirty east, Lee County, Alabama. Mister Jimmy Pilar, owner. Mrs. Davis?
An ordinance to D N X property out of the city of Penning City, Alabama, a tract of land lying on section twenty-eight, township eighteen north, ranch thirty east, Lee County, Alabama. Whereas, the city of Penning City, Alabama, has received a petition signed by Jimmy Potter, owner of the property described in said petition, requesting that said property be deannexed out of the city of Penning City, Penning City, Alabama. And whereas, the city council of the city of Penning City, Alabama, finds that the par, the said property described in said petition does lie within the corporate limits of the city of Penning City, Alabama. And whereas, the city of Penning City, Alabama, has considered said petition and is of the opinion that said petition should be granted and that said property should be deannexed out of the city of Penning City, Alabama. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Penning City, Alabama, that said council does hereby assent to the deannexation out of the city of Penning City, Alabama, the following described property to wit. Legal, legal description. A parcel of land located in section twenty-eight, township eighteen north, ranch thirty east, Lee County, Alabama, being more particularly described as follows. Subject to easement and restrictions of right. It is further ordained that a copy of this ordinance be filed by the city clerk in the city, in the office of the judge of probate of Lee County, Alabama, and in the office of the judge of probate of Russell County, Alabama. And a copy of said ordinance be published one time in a newspaper published in Russell County, Alabama. Passed proof and adopted.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council, we've heard the first reading, and at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to place on first reading.
Motion to place on first reading.
All right, we have a motion, Councilman Moore, may I have a second?
Sir.
Second, from Councilman Day. Any comments, questions, or discussions? Okay, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day. Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, council on the license application. This is a second reading, I would not ask the clerk to reread this, but I would ask the clerk, uh, to read a letter that was addressed yesterday to this potential owner of this business. So with that, I would like to ask, uh, Mrs. Davis to read the letter that was sent yesterday, uh, so we can make sure that it gets into the minutes. Okay? Okay, council? Mrs. Davis?
I have a letter from the public safety director, Raymond J. Smith, referencing Annie Mary Robinson, Annie Mae's Lounge Bar and Grill, nine hundred Old Road, Penning City, Alabama, three six eight six nine. After review of the applications for on-premise, on-premise beer, on-premise wine, and premise whiskey, wine licenses, I recommend that the license be denied for the following reasons. Number one, this location was admiring non-conforming property when it closed in September of twenty twenty-three due to no off-street parking as required by the zoning ordinance. Number two, when a minor non-conforming use ceases, the property must conform to all regulations prior to reopening. Number three, the property will be a public safety issue if it, the license, if it gives the license of for on-premise alcohol sales were to be approved due to no availability of off-street parking. Sincerely, Raymond J. Smith, Public Safety Director.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Davis, we do want this to reflect in our minutes. So with that, at this time, council, I would like to call for a motion, uh, to deny.
Motion to deny.
All right, we have a motion, Councilwoman Moore, may I have a second?
Sir.
Second, Councilman Day. Okay? Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, council. Proceeding on, council, this is also a first reading. It is an application for an on-premise beer license, on-premise wine license, on-premise whiskey, wine license, and billiard or pool room license submitted by Ted Sir, Bar Lounge Manager at Eats LLC doing business as Kramer's Sport Bar located at thirty-two eleven, Martin Luther King Junior Parkway South Unit B and C in city of Penning City, Alabama. Mrs. Davis?
I have three letters. First letter coming from the police department, chief of police George J. Stoudinger, referencing Chandra Dickens, Chasers Bar Lounge in Eats LLC doing business as Kramer's Sport Bar, LLC, thirty-two eleven Martin Luther King Junior Parkway, Unit B and C, Alabama, three six eight six nine. I have reviewed the applications for on-premise beer, on-premise wine, on-premise whiskey, wine, and billiard or pool room licenses, and I have no objection to the issuance of these licenses to the applicant based upon her criminal background investigation. Sincerely, George J. Stoudinger, chief of police. The second letter reads as follows. From prison H. Kennedy Fire Chief, referencing Chandra Dickens, Chasers Bar Lounge in Eats LLC. This letter is in reference to the application submitted by Chandra Dickens of Chasers Bar Lounge in Eats LLC doing business at Kramer's Sport Bar located at thirty-two eleven Martin Luther King Junior Parkway, Unit B and C, Penning City, Alabama, three six eight six nine. This applicant has applied for on-premise beer, on-premise wine, whiskey, wine, and billiard or pool room licenses. A final inspection has been conducted, and this facility meets the fire code requirements for this type of property in the city. Sincerely, prison H. Kennedy Fire Chief. The third letter reads as follows from Ray Rogers, chief building official. This letter is in reference to the application submitted by Chandra Dickens of Chasers Bar Lounge in Eats LLC located at thirty-two eleven Martin Luther King Junior Parkway, Unit B and C for an on-premise beer, on-premise wine, whiskey, wine, billiards, or pool room licenses. This facility was inspected on June twelfth, twenty twenty-four and meets the minimum building hall requirements. This office has no objections to the approval of these licenses. Sincerely, Ray Rogers, chief building official.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council, we have all heard the first reading, at this time, I would like to ask for a motion of council to place on first reading, may I have a motion?
Motion to place on first reading.
All right. Motion from Councilman Day, may I have a second?
Sir.
Second, from Councilman Moore. Okay? Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes.
Thank you.
At this time, council would like to call out attorney, Mr. Danny Grant.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mayor, council, we want, have three claims on your agenda today. The first claim is filed by Judy H. McConville. Uh, she is, uh, stating that she rented a potter. It was more than a potter, but she ran through it, and, um, behind that, the reason that is a, um, private property owned by that, um, shopping center, um, and we weren't doing the work because we can't work on, uh, private property. Um, based on that, um, I would recommend that we deny Ms. McConville's, um, client now, send her a letter telling her, yeah, who she reached to file with.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Grant. Thank you, Mr. Grant. Council, we've heard your recommendation from our attorney. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion of approval of this request from the base.
Motion to approve recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilor Gordon, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilor Davis. Mrs. Davis?
Councilor. Councilor Davis?
Yes.
Councilor Carter?
Yes.
Councilor Bailey?
Yes.
Councilor Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Loeb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, the next claim, uh, Mayor, Council, is filed by Optum Insurance Care of Michael Kitchens. The claim alleges that, uh, we were weeping down Martin Luther King Junior Parkway, and, uh, Mr. Kitchens, when she owned the property. And the memorandum of the department here says there is no police report and cause of death of the claim shows it was a T-bone accident that happened on ten, uh, nineteen twenty-three. Uh, and they can't determine, you know, what recommendation to make because they don't, they didn't sense sufficient information. Secondly, uh, they did not submit three estimates as required by Phoenix City. And, uh, based on that, like, like Wallace said last night, you know, it's like it never happened when there ain't any proof, you know, um, that it happened. And, uh, based on that, I don't want to recommend the child to know that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Grant. And the other question I didn't think about yesterday, but it's happened even if they did, as you stated, from Mr. Davis said, but it's been past six months anyway. Or if they did, if that claim wasn't there, is accepted?
I think, um... Yeah, I think, you know, I didn't really get the date, but, you know, that's probably true.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Grant.
All right, and then the third one is filed...
That, 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 that...
Oh, okay. Lou, sir.
You've heard your recommendation from our attorney. I asked, asked Council if we can get a motion for approval of, uh, Council's recommendation.
Call for a motion.
It's not.
Okay, motion, Councilor Davis, may I have a second? I say, Councilor Carter? Okay. Mrs. Davis?
Councilor Davis?
Yes.
Councilor Carter?
Yes.
Councilor Bailey?
Yes.
Councilor Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Loeb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and the third, uh, claim is a subrogation claim filed by State Farm Insurance on behalf of Casey D. Lightfield, uh, did a loss November eleventh, twenty twenty-three. There are alleged that, um, this Lightfield, or I don't know if that's Mr. Davis's, but that Lightfield was, um, on South River Street and hit a pop home. Again, there was no accident reported, uh, as it was in the other one. And there are two different listing, uh, locations in the claim. In order, in order to make a determination, clarification of actual location of accident is to be provided, um, I would recommend denying on that claim. Again, since this is a subrogation claim, they did not submit three estimates as required by Phoenix City. I recommend denying this claim also.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Grant.
Yes.
Council, we've heard your recommendation from our attorney. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of this recommendation.
Motion to approve recommendation.
I would like to have a motion from Councilor Gordon, may I have a second?
Sir.
Second, Councilor Davis. Mrs. Davis?
Councilor Davis?
Yes.
Councilor Carter?
Yes.
Councilor Bailey?
Yes.
Councilor Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Loeb?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Again, thanks to Council. truly appreciate you all, thank you all so much. We certainly appreciate, uh, the Department of Defense, and we certainly appreciate everyone that is here attending. Thank you all so much for coming out. And just thank, uh, people in our community for allowing us to be and serve this community. We're certainly grateful and thankful that I do that, so we continue to show more gratefulness. With that being said, I'd like to ask any Council members there. Anything you see would like to say before I, uh, ask you, I'll say it my way.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good, I appreciate it, but I had a fourth of July, sixth of July. As I say, a lot of different towns, a lot of communities, we live in the best country in the world, freest country in the world. And all speak our minds, and all disagree. But at the end of the day, we should all live together. We gotta learn how to live together. This country's never been more divided than it is this long. A lot of us, our thoughts, some of the other people's thoughts, getting in the middle of our country, and they don't need to be in the middle of it. But yet, that still shows how much we work in our country. We got the right to go to a holy place and vote up and down, as the man says. You don't have to explain to anybody, you don't have to apologize to anybody, your votes are yours. We should be proud of all of our local first responders, the people that serve locally, city, county, state. Be proud of the people that serve in our country, here in our nation, right here where we live, in the one grand world. All of the people that I mentioned are aware of that. You don't see it, luckily, we live in areas, fair enough to say. If you look at other areas of the country, you're not near safe where you are. I don't know what the difference is, we're the same people all over. But we just don't have as much going on here, thank goodness. Maybe we won't ever be talking at the cost of that. But Benjamin Franklin said back in seventeen seventy-six, the Fourth of July should be celebrated with pompous and great fireworks, explosion, happiness and joy. We need to remember that every year. There's two hundred forty-eight years that our country's been great. We went through a lot of struggles, we've come through every one of them, a better country. We're going through a struggle handling presidential election coming up. Everybody was big size, a cheap size, and you have that right. But don't let something in that way separate us from being Americans and values. They're trying to put religion back in its school. To me, that's wonderful, but I'm not saying it because of religion. I'm saying it because religion is part of history. And history is part of our country and who we're on a theme. And you can't live in this country without religion being part of your history. It goes all the way back to the founding of this country and this nation. So it's not just trying to make somebody badness or Catholic or talking mad about, oh, religion is Buddhism and things like that. It's got nothing to do with it. Our country was just founded on religion. Religion was part of our first creed in this country. Religion goes all the way back to our history, all the way back to our beginnings. And with that being part of us, you can't discriminate. So it needs to be like that. You don't need to be trying to convert each other, that's, that's personal choices. I personally believe that personal choices, people should prefer Christianity. But that's a personal choice when you're in your life. But I just want everybody to enjoy this celebration, remember that Phoenix City was put on a fantastic celebration. Saturday, all of the street, every year, it gets bigger and better. Only COVID related, the whole of that. But we've enjoyed living in this country, we live in the best country in the world, and I can put this in that. We live in the best city in the country. And I'm just proud to say that I lived in Phoenix, Alabama, and I'm lucky to be part of people in this city that can make some differences for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Councilor Gordon? Councilor Davis?
Well, we're gonna say, Angela, Mr. Bailey said, oh, I can prefer, well, Mr. Bailey, it already said, I'd just like to say throughout the session I did, uh, with you a lot of the state remodel, I was driving and peaking, I drank and drive, I had to make the cost of that. And, uh, in Georgia, fireworks during the city, it's gonna be a great show, I understand. And I bring up kids, I'll say, enjoy that. One of the thing out there, I was going, drinking game, hanging out to the pool, but it was like this stuff. And I go back to the school, going out to town, and I always stop there when I'm on the street. And I'm very proud, uh, the, uh, the Phoenix downtown district, so I'm very proud of that. And, uh, the pool looked good, and the light, but when they got, got me in my damn car, I mean, shake my hand, you know, very proud, I liked that. Thank you for that.
Okay.
Huh? I have two, three things, maybe. First, I'd like to, um, talk about, um, the, um, the, um, the Fourth of July.
Hello, Mayor, Council, I'm just wanna remind everybody about this early, Mrs. Will, I mean, Thursday on the force, um, everything, I'm in theater, it starts at four o'clock. The gates open, we get to park up for the food trucks, music's off at four, the main stage starts at six thirty. Lots of good music, lots of good food, and then fireworks at about nine forty-five. I hate, I hate to give my time to, I'll, I'll, I'm just... The music's at nine, but this private trust is at nine forty-five. Just be patient, it gets good and dark, it's my normal shooting, so.
We are happy, so.
We're good at that. We're having a great time, so.
Don't piss on all of us if it doesn't start at nine o'clock. We are happy.
It will happen. They come out and do, they get lots, they get a lot of local food trucks, you can hop on them, listen to some good music, possibly, cool if you can. And then also, assuming a little pitch ready, uh, it'll be open Thursday and Friday, of course, the weekend, so. Go to the pool, hang out, go to the amphitheater, fireworks, a good weekend.
Thank you, talk so much, Mr. Grant.
Second thing, we've been working on something for some years, you know, trying to, uh, see that we do have truly formed, you know, we've been, how's we're able? We're working on programs, so, uh, I have some time ago, and we have really rich, uh, charity partners, and we've been, you know, housing out of jail, try to put them out to, to, to citizens again. And I think we're coming to a break, and I want to achieve this, we've got, uh, not long to that. At this point, we should try to help people, we have to establish, one with mine, one with mine, share the family, and, uh, let's commit.
Well, especially, you know, the sheriff has several programs, G D programs, education programs, those that are in your jails, another program that Chief Hunter has, uh, been pushing for a number of months, and it's been difficult to try to, you know, work out in kinks, but I think we're to the point now that Sheriff Taylor called yesterday, informing he's got twenty candidates that are possible with reach of criteria. And, uh, these candidates are currently incarcerated, in the jail, but we're gonna go down, gonna interview those twenties, see what their skill sets are, what, what jobs they may qualify for inside the city, whether it departs, running utilities, uh, boat works, and give them an opportunity to work while they're still incarcerated. Some of them may be in jail for unpaid, uh, child support or fines that they may have, or they may in fact have a sentence that they're gonna stay in jail for some time. But Sheriff will work with us to be able to offer these, uh, individuals an opportunity to prove that they're ready to get out of jail. And, uh, if it works out, it'll be a workout move for them and the city. Because what happens is we do offer employment to these individuals. Sheriff will make arrangements to put them on work release, they'll be able to go out of the jail in the morning, you could work for the city, do various jobs that they all have to do. And, uh, they'll be earning the exact same pay that a normal employee would be. They wouldn't be full-time employees, they wouldn't get retired, and the insurance, all the things that come would be on a full-time employee. Uh, and then after they get through with their work day, we bring them back to the jail and, uh, spend the night in jail, and next morning come and go to work again. By the time they get out of jail, they probably have a pretty nice nest egg, and somebody saved up, and hopefully, when they get out, they'll be able to fall right back into society and as well as, you know, making a contribution to the city and providing the services to the city. So we're hopeful that out of the twenty, we may get four or five or six that we could, you know, offer some employment to, and, uh, hopefully, they see the value of that, they'll be able to see that that's gonna be an opportunity for them to get out of jail and not fall back into, uh, you know, another issue that takes them back to jail, whether that's keeping up on, on child support payments, or, you know, not committing additional crimes, or staying sober enough long enough to, to maintain the job. So again, we're hopeful, I think it's, uh, another opportunity, again, we don't want to see people go to jail to just never return back to society the time again. We wanna make sure that we give everybody an opportunity to redeem and come back into the fold and be part of the production of our society. So that's, again, we're gonna look up, we're talking nature now, trying to figure out the data, we're gonna go down there and bring in twenty applications, interview these twenty potentials, and see what, what they have to offer, see what we can offer them and what they can offer us. You know, what?
That's a great problem, sounds good.
Again, as you know, it's, it's, it's too risky, and, and, but it's, I think it's, it's an opportunity for us to show that we're willing to make, you know, the effort, if they're willing to, you know, go and participate in the program, if they are. Like I said, it could be a very good thing, I mean, they don't be in jail, not making any money, why not get out there and make some money and actually have a full-time job? So when they get out, they continue working, and they, you know, they're bills in your, you know, or working a ski, all those things that, that come with having a job.
Well, make sure it's not seen, so you can work, it's, he's not a hardened criminal.
Yeah, ladies and gentlemen, we... No, neither of these people are even, they may be felony, but they're below the felony, they're, they're, most of them are gonna be open fines or having, you know, somehow, uh, you know, DUI or social abuse issue that causes them to get in jail. As long as they can stay sober or keep up their, their, uh, their fines and so forth, they're gonna be, they're, they're good people, a lot of good people in jail, so nobody goes to jail that, uh, who want to be a bad person, isn't one of ten percent of the whole population that are evil people. These are not nobody in jail people that, uh, that worship our world and try to...
Do they get, keep their jobs from the, from the citizens?
That's what we want to work, we're ready to let them.
That's the whole right, I mean, there's...
That's how I need the whole program, the whole program, we want...
We don't want them to wait to get out of jail and get the job, we want them to get the job while they're still in jail.
Well, they might, when they wait to get out of jail to get the job, I mean, they can qualify for the job. Of course, they're in jail. Well, anybody in there, this may show other people, you know, that have gotten out of jail that's scared to come to find their job, come to find their job.
Well, all the time, even a person that's incarcerated out of jail in the situation that they're in when they went into incarceration, this party can get out, they have bank accounts.
It changes their position.
And your kids' money, they can see that, your program, the system, how to work them, people. You have a retirement system that's one of the greatest in the nation, that's helping you accomplish things now. So you're already coming out, you know, what they say, you're telling them, you haven't got any boots on, or you haven't got any boots on, you know, you got to put boots on, so you can't tie them up.
Well, the...
On the next time, on the next time, when you're supposed to pay, that money is going to go to a certain account, I don't know.
The way the work release program works, the sheriff will actually manage those accounts. So what happens is then he puts a bank account, next door account, holds that for them, and, uh, all of that money is used to pay outstanding taxes that they may have. They don't take it off, that's one thing the sheriff feel clear about. He made sure that he's only taking a small percentage to make sure that those taxes get paid. And then, of course, it's up to the inmates, and they want to pay more than they can, but fortunately, that does go and pay down some of that cost. Again, so when they get out of jail, they're debt-free. And they got a bank account that's been turned over to them, their next door account. But that's, that's just the beginning, and their insurance is already in place, and, and they're able to use it instead of having to wait one, typically have to wait one before you use your insurance. But all their medical bills are gonna be paid as long as they're incarcerated. But as soon as they get out, and then with the support of lump insurance automatically effective, their savings account, that's going to the retirement account, that's beginning to build, and they've been in jail for six, eight months, that's already six, eight months' part of retirement, like Sheriff, uh, Chief said, that's, you can't be, that's free money that's gonna be there. We're macking them, retirement is eight or seven percent for the employee, another seven percent to the city. So the city's paying another seven percent on top of that, that's going to the bank account, that's gonna be their retirement forever.
When they're married, and they have kids, would they be able to use that kind of kid?
Sure, they can use the money wherever they want, sir, oh, yeah, that's the point. They, of course, can't take nothing, they would have been dead for it, but they can ask the sheriff, uh, to send that money wherever they want to. Again, pay off whatever debts they may have, whatever fines they may have, just a small percentage, pay the right for the two dividends, the debts, in terms of, for, you know, sheriff. But the rest of that money's there, so they can do what they want to. But that, again, hopefully, that's an opportunity because, which way is the point? Maybe they think that they're not qualified to get some jobs. We go down there and actually recruit, letting them know, just because you can take them to crime, so they can earn their own.
Good skill, yeah, that's good.
Most of them, and there's lots, like you said, a lot of good skilled labor, that we, we can use trustee labor for many years, but, you know, this, this one's gonna change, you know, it'll be just like a trustee, but they're, not that we wear a lawsuit, they're gonna be city employed, wearing city outfit, working and making money. The only thing that they gotta do is go back to the jail and, uh, finish their sentence and work out for us.
What do we ask, uh? Majority will be male, so what about females?
First, two females, that group that the sheriff has been allowed as potential candidates, so, you know, there are things to talk about.
Okay, so...
Yeah, two, two females, that, that you decide, uh...
And what about transportation, so the officer will transport back and forth from...
Well, we have, uh, most departments, any, um, first, uh, public works have transport vans for... We have a little bit longer, just make sure that it's working, make sure it's back on time. Once they get out of jail, they're gonna have their own transportation, but while they're in jail, what they care about?
No, we, we want, we want that, that's usually what they want to do. It's already, I mean, it's, it's, it's...
It's not, you know, it's something that the city, you know, and the government, you know, the sheriff says, fuck, man, pretty long, which, but, and, and the young mistake is my career here, you know, city edge government, you didn't go alive, but we had some of our own skilled laborers that was incarcerated, spark its back, you know, before we get like this, we just have to jail them. And, uh, our best candidate, we got here, and on top of that, which, and see, where you know, C C, that was filled with staff, it's a good goal, was the other side of the big question. You know, you can't define, you know, people that want to, I call it, or certain things, you know, and they got, they didn't get up on their feet, that has nothing to do with their skills that's on the brain you take out once you tap into it. So it has, you know, a lot, and that's one thing, one, that's, with us working together and put this program together that we can do to try to reestablish the city, it's a lot more than cleaning streets up and, you know, fixing water leaks and, and, like, we talk about the people aspect of this. And on those things, uh, really, a lot of people are not able to take and deal with it, but we gonna have to deal with it to get to where they need to go. it to get to where they need to go, as a nation, as a state, and as a city. Know the choice, it's not all the time, but you're going to have, the history and the things that we were talking about last night, we had to read in the city, that a lot of people had to deal with, and it brought a lot of things to build in our school system, which we have a great school system. Your industry is tied to, a lot of places are tied to our school system, the great beginning here, as far as businesses. I am so happy and thankful that everything worked out the way it did, and they grow. Grow out their business, and have their needs, and try to get better, do one another, that's something that I had to say, I don't say nothing else, too. You know, we talked about being religious back in the school, you know, that's by choice, and that's a great thing, and having, great, but we got, we need the history, true history, and the school was also, a few, and a lot of, two weeks ago, we said here, we talked about general teaching, when we talk about the freedom of slaves, is that they take you, that means, it is the fact that, we don't need to confuse people with history, go back and say, and say, and say, it's a great nation, Lord bless us, a mode enough to save you, it couldn't be, to my way, I'm, you know, so, until we saw a teach, the truth of histories of people, won't be so confused amongst one another, about faithful times, and how we have done, to strive and keep on working, it's very important to be what we supposed to have been at that time. I am going to say that, because that is the truth, I have history on my side to prove that. So, until we get to that, and that's something that we are working at, but let's stop confusing kids, let's stop fooling ourselves. Let's do, be good people, let's, you know, truth about things that people work together about, the thing we don't see is these younger people, these younger kids coming up there, that really want to know what is the problem amongst adults, and why are we misleading them with so many different stories? That's just, we need to be great, and, but, I say this, I say all of that, I am grateful, that I live in Phoenix City, I thank for my life, I thank for all, for all of y'all, for the family, but if you're working, if you're going to build, grow, you go straight, let's go straight on. Let's not put all this good courage that's there, that's in there, but so, our school system have also had to work on educating our kids in the right and proper manner, and and they can't have it. A lot of times, they can't have it, but it is built that way. But I was educated in a system like that over fifty years, so, away from there, where we hadn't known our government, we hadn't known our history, and it was put upon us so we could work, I could get to where I'm today, and understand that, and work with different people. So, you're not preparing people to interact with one another, they don't, their culture, and they have differences, and that's why we're so far out of hand as a nation, let's be truthful.
Anything else? Well, thanks to the council, we thank this community, we certainly thank all the new faces that are here, appreciate you all's time, thank you for last time. And if this is your first time you visit one of the building, be proud of it, as we are, and continue to come and be encouraged with your community in this city. With that said, I'd like to thank this council again, thank all the Department Kids, and certainly our citizens of Phoenix City, and being part of us as the council, to be in these positions, and we do know that the greatest thing that we can do is truly, you know, ourselves, and we do that for the right reason. And as I heard Mr. Leonard say, how grateful he is, a person that's been here five years, I would challenge us that we all show grateful, be grateful for things, and also show empathy. This is the time of year we need to celebrate and be inclusive, because inclusion brings diversity, and diversity brings strength, and that's why I specialize into all of us being on the same team. So, we're very grateful, thanks to CTV Beach for bringing us to our citizen, thank each and every one of our citizens, and at this time, we do stand with her, thank you all so much. Thank you.